Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda, we did have someone under citizens comments, but I think they are no longer going to speak. So, we will call this meeting to order. And tonight Chaplain Tim York from our Smyrna Police Department will do our prayer. And our pledge will be done by Fran Dunn, our Executive Director of the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna. If you'll stand with us, please.
Our Father, we're grateful for our country. We thank you, Lord, for freedom. Lord, we pray tonight that you would be with our military wherever they may be. Thank you, Lord, for those who serve in our city with emergency services. We thank you especially, Lord, for our dispatchers during this week as we honor them. Father, we pray that you will give our city leaders wisdom as they deliberate business tonight. Father, give them the direction to guide this city. Help us all to be good citizens. Help us, Lord, to help one another and love one another and lift up one another in these days. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain York. Thank you, Fran. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call.
I will. Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peoples.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
And Mayor Reed.
Here.
Item three is approval or corrections of the minutes of the March 8, 2022, and March 24, 2022 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
Order, to Parliament.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
To approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Correspondents and Communications, anything tonight, Brian?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay. We have two things under awards and recognitions tonight. Our first is Senior Citizens Day. And Amber, you have a proclamation that we're going to read.
Yes, ma'am. Whereas older citizens bring to our community their knowledge, their breadth of insight, their talents, their wisdom, and their life experiences; and whereas our older population is a productive, active, and vital contributor to our thriving community; and whereas the Older Americans Act was adopted by the United States Congress and signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson on July 14, 1965; and whereas the town of Smyrna is dedicated to ensuring our community is a place in which our population can mature as they grow older and offer to our older citizens a place to thrive and participate to the fullest in the community; and whereas our older citizens can find within our community the encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services needed for a fulfilling life of independence and dignity; and whereas the month of May has traditionally been celebrated as a time to honor our older citizens through ceremonies, events, fairs, and other activities at the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna and other locations. And the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, with the support of the town of Smyrna, will organize and hold annually a Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna. And whereas the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, a nonprofit organization formed in 1971, currently serving more than 500 members for recreational, physical, and educational and social activities as well as travel opportunities, is dedicated to the well-being of its members. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mary Esther Reed, Mayor of the town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 1, 2022, as the sixth annual Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna, Tennessee, and encourage all Smyrna citizens to join me in this worthy observance. Proclaim this the 12th day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Amber. Fran, if you and your group will come forward.
Y'all, y'all staying behind. You want to come down here, okay?
That's fine, you go right. Y'all sound all right.
You got her first?
Thanks, chief.
He's going to give me a hard time for a while. Everybody shift this way for us. Everybody, the top row shift a little bit. Mayor, you all too, so. Yeah. That would be great. All right. One, two, three, this camera.
We want you to reread if I was at.
Well, I was going to let you introduce your... Okay, okay. I didn't write it, how about that, Ms. Dottie, okay? Brian did that.
It was what was sent to us. Fran, I'm writing it down.
I thought one of my members wrote it down.
So, we just want to say how much we appreciate you all and all that you do for the town. You all have so many great things going on over at the center and so many fun things always. So, I'm going to let you introduce these two nice ladies that you've brought with you. And then, if you want to go to the podium for anything you want to say, I think that may be easier.
Yes, thank you. So, to my right is Cheryl Black, who has been a member for several years, and she's on my Board of Directors. And I'm sure most everybody knows Dottie Sims, who is the President of our membership this year. We have a few other members in the audience who did not join us up front. Linda McNeil is one of our members. And believe it or not, Dan Eppright is also one of our members. So, I claim them all.
Great, great.
So, we appreciate all of them being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Reed and council members for this recognition. Once again, it's hard to believe it's been seven years because this is the sixth annual Senior Citizens Day. But we appreciate the recognition, not only of the Senior Activity Center, but of the senior population in Smyrna. I love being a part of this organization that provides opportunities and programs that engages, educates, and enhances the lives of the older adults in our community. The over 55 adults, Dottie, how about that?
I just barely made it.
We celebrated our 50th anniversary last year with many successful events and activities. But now we're focused on the next 50 years with a vision of growth in our future. Our membership continues to increase, and we continue to have a need for more space. On May the 10th, we will hold our Older Americans Luncheon at the Smyrna Event Center with approximately 140 people expected to attend. On August 20th, we'll host the dinner portion of our spaghetti event fundraiser at the event center as well. These are just a couple of examples that we're unable to hold events like these in our existing building because it's just not large enough. We are actively looking for land to build a new center that would increase our space from the current 5,000 square feet to approximately 20,000 square feet. And if the town of Smyrna just happens to have five acres lying around somewhere, we would greatly appreciate that. I think Jerome would probably help us get that going with his skills. For anyone who's interested in more information about the center, you're welcome to come by and visit us at 100 Rake Street. We're behind the library, right off of Enid Springs Road. You can visit our website, which is smyrnerseniorcenter.org. Membership dues are only $35 a year. So, we think that's the best deal in town for what you get, everything that we have to offer. And you do only have to be 55 years old to join. The Senior Activity Center is an integral part of the community. We're proud and grateful to serve the senior population in Smyrna and surrounding areas. And we could not have reached the status that we're at today without the support of the town of Smyrna, local businesses, churches, citizens, and our own members. Thank you again for this recognition.
Thank you, Brian.
Amber, we now have a proclamation for the Fair Housing Act.
Yes, ma'am. Whereas April 11, 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national origin. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas fair housing is vital to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas the town of Smyrna fully supports the intent and purpose of the federal Fair Housing Act and local fair housing laws and follows policies and practices in order to achieve its goal. Now therefore, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2022, as Fair Housing Month in the town of Smyrna to establish Smyrna as an inclusive community committed to fair housing. Proclaim this the 12th day of April, 2022.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
So, we have a few people in the audience we want to share this proclamation with tonight, if you would. Tara, Phil, Rex. James Taylor is with us tonight. I'm going to let each one of these people really quick. Yeah, you've got to balance this out. And Rex is here, too. Rex, if you would, since you kind of chaired this whole thing, I think, right? Did you? You do? Well, Fair Housing Month. Well, so, we're going to have you come up and say a few words right here with us, if you would. Quit taking pictures and be part of the act.
I got some pictures today, all right.
Yes, the Fair Housing Act is 54 years old, as of yesterday. We're having a fair housing luncheon in Murfreesboro tomorrow at the Country Club. We do this every year. The mayor has been a very good friend of mine the last few years. Last year, I was on my own coming up here and meeting with her and just grabbing the proclamation. But we do do the proclamation regardless of COVID or anything else. Fair housing is very, very important. Anti-discrimination is very important, and we are proud that the mayor and the town of Smyrna support us in that.
I noticed you keep passing this back over to me. I want everybody just really quick to introduce yourselves. Tell them where you work, how long you've been in the real estate business, and we'll pass it back up this way. I'm going to start with James down there. JT, we call him JT, but he's very well-known as James Taylor, and you may recognize the name.
I'm Jim Taylor. My wife and I are both Realtors. We work for Mr. Atkins, actually, at Parks. My wife Melissa's been there about going on 10 years. I've been there a couple of years.
Good evening. My name's Jim Sellers. I'm with the local Crylike office. I've had the opportunity to work in real estate for about 30 years now, and it's an honor to work with all of you.
This is why I'm standing between these two guys. There's so much experience, I just want to soak it all up. My name is Phil Wilson. My wife Natalie and I are the Wilsons Realtors with Parks here in Smyrna. Everyone that knows Natalie knows that she's the boss. I'm happy to work for her. So, and thank you, Town Council, Town of Smyrna, Mayor Reed. Thank you for this proclamation. It's very important to our industry.
Tara Engel and I have been with Parks in Smyrna and been a Realtor for 16 years. I'm proud to be working in the town of Smyrna.
Thank you all for everything that you do. Y'all are always so great to jump in and to help with any projects that we have going on here in the town of Smyrna. And we are just happy to be a part of today. So, thank you.
We're going to get a picture with everybody, if you would.
Or get some back. Yeah. Can one of you guys go over this side? That would be great.
Let's do that. Let's do this.
Sounds like Phil.
He's going to give me a hard time for a while. Okay. One, two, three, this camera. Got it. Okay. We will now move on to our consent agenda. And the consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion. But any item on the consent agenda can be pulled off and voted on individually if a council member has questions or wants to vote on it separately. I do like to read the consent agenda before voting on it, so you in the audience and you at home know what we are voting on. Bear with me, we've got quite a few items on the consent agenda tonight. The first one is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Galls Incorporated for uniforms for the police department. I think that's yours. Item two is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement relative to the rental of Thomas Edison's secret lab exhibit for the Betty Bran Museum. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a sublease relative to a portion of Sharp Springs Park at Beatty, to Beatty Farms for wildlife and agricultural purposes. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomas &amp; Hutton to perform limited construction engineering and inspection services for the Fire Hall Number One Edition project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SEC Engineering to perform engineering design to add a pedestrian signal at the intersection of Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SEC Engineering to perform engineering design for a new traffic signal at One Mile Lane and Ammerville Road. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve the ranking of the selection committee for the Lowry Street Streetscape Project Phase Three. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with HDR to prepare traffic responsive timing plans for the signals along the Sam Ridley corridor between I-24 and Old Nashville Highway. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a work agreement with Monitoring and Management Services, LLC, to update the fats, oils, and grease control program for the wastewater treatment plant. And the last item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with the firm of Caius Rogers Barge Holder King, PLLC, KNR, to perform title work, closing services, and lender release documentation for the North Lowry Waterline Project. Council, is there an item you'd like to pull off and discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, ma'am.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Okay, we will now move on to old business. Phew, gosh, Steve, you scared me. We have, we have five items tonight under public hearings, but I do think one has been pulled. Which item is that?
It is item F.
Okay. So, it's... It's deferred. Item F is deferred?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff, will we need to vote on that and do the public hearing or no?
I think since they've withdrawn it, I think it's on the record now that you stated that...
It's deferred.
Well, sorry, for the night, I meant withdrawn for the night.
So, we're good. We don't have to do anything with that one. Okay. Okay, so, our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of R-3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 19.00, requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Keith and Carolyn Bryson, containing 68 acres. The property request is located west of Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. Kevin?
This is an annexation and R-3 request on west of Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. It is contiguous to the town in a couple of locations, at Parcel 805, which is addressed at 9351 Rocky Fork Ammerville, and Parcel 17, which is addressed at 8965 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. Land use plan does support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is R-3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. Town would be providing all services here except for water, which would be provided by Gasalda Utility District. This tract is vacant, but it does have no road frontage. But we do have an agreement or commitment from an adjoining property owner to provide access if the town ever needs it prior to development of the property, which would be through the property at 9351 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. This would completely surround Parcel 18, which would still remain not in the town limits, but so it would be surrounding it, though. Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would recommend approval.
Okay, we've seen this at a couple of different meetings. Are there any questions or comments for Kevin before we go to the public for the public Seeing none, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you will state your name, your address, if you're representing anyone, and if you live in the town of Smyrna. Name?
Kevin, it's just...
Address?
5060 Regent Drive, Nashville, Tennessee.
If you represent anybody?
I represent the Collins and myself. I own the piece of property in front of it.
Great, and do you live, obviously, you do not live in Smyrna? Great, thank you.
I, but I have, I own the nine acres in front of this, and I have agreed for any access if it's ever needed. The nine acres, hopefully one day, fingers crossed, this gets passed, this will be a continuation of Blakeney, which has been very successful. So, and you can see it touches the back of Blakeney there. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I was the guy who had the easement, so I want to make sure to know that the town's welcome to it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll be abstaining, Mayor.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item B is also a public hearing, and it's a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 19.00. Kevin?
This is just a plan of services for this annexation. It puts in writing all the services the town would be providing upon effective date. Again, the town would be providing all services except for water at this parcel. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this about the plan of services? Okay, since this is a public hearing, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll abstain in this room, as well, as plan of services.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item C is our housekeeping item, which is a consideration of a resolution of memorandum of ordinance 22-07 relative to the annexation of R-3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 19.00. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is also a public hearing, and it's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 18, Parcel 6.12, 6.13, and part of Parcel 6.05 to go from I-2 to I-1. It's requested by Eli Waldron. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.39 acres and is located on Threet Industrial Boulevard. Kevin?
This is a rezoning request. It's two tracts of land and a part of a third. It is on Threet Industrial Road, about 1,400 feet from the intersection with Sam Ridley Parkway East. Land use plan would support the airport innovation character area here, which is consistent with our plan. Other zone would be, surrounding zoning is a mix of C-2, I-2, and A-1. There was a concept plan submitted. I did include that in your packet. It is, is, it's there, but it's not, it's for information purposes only. This is not a PUD, so it would not be, you know, necessarily that would be what would be the development of the property. But they did provide that just for your information. Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, and I would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Seeing no questions, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item E, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 29, Parcel 19.06, and part of Parcel 19.08 to go from C-2 to C-2 with an H2 height overlay. It's requested by Mr. Patel. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.71 acres and is located at the corner of Sam Ridley Parkway West and Expo Drive. Kevin?
Yeah, this is, as you said, it is at the corner of Sam Ridley Parkway and Expo Drive. Land use plan would support kind of a 24 gateway, we call it, area, which would support kind of a mix of various uses. And this, of course, the underlying zoning of C-2 as well as the height overlay would be consistent with that land use plan. Surrounding zoning is all C-2. Maximum building height in C-2 is 40 feet, and this is requested to add a height overlay to allow a building as tall as 61 feet, 4 inches. There are several hotels in this area, and some of them have been granted H2 overlays, so this is not, this would be consistent with the area. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this or any comments? Seeing none, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F was the item that was deferred, and so we'll move on to our new business under item eight. Item A, Planning Commission report. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation... Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PR zoning of property located on tax map 54, parcel 14.00, requested by Jennifer, is it Speck? On behalf of Collins Corner Ventures LLC, containing 9.4 acres, property is located at 4412 Morton Lane, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is, the next two items are tied together. This is, this is an annexation request for one parcel, then there's others that are already within the town, and so we actually are changing the zoning there. So, it is the same development plan, but would be, again, tied together and have to be voted on separately, it's two separate ordinances. So, again, so I'll talk about, we can talk about both of the next two kind of together here. This is at the intersection of Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Ammival Road. Land use plan will support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area with a neighborhood commercial node. We did identify this area when we were doing our comp plan update, that this would be a location for a potential, a good location for a neighborhood commercial, small area of that, in this area. Surrounding zoning is R-3 and PRD, which is the Cedar Hills and Blakeney PRDs in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Again, this, the town would be providing all services here, except for water, which would be provided by Consolidated Utility District. Sewer would have to be extended from either Westover or Bankside. There is an existing house on this property, it would be removed as a part of the development. The parcel on the map that you're showing in blue is what we're talking about for annexation, the yellow parcels are the parcels that are already within the town, and would just be a part of the next ordinance for rezoning. This proposed PUD is for 80 townhomes and three commercial lots. Access would be from Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Ammival Road. Uses allowed for the commercial lots are, they're listed in the development plan, they're essentially C-2 type uses, with several exceptions, as they are shown on the plan. The townhomes would be a minimum of 1,400 square feet, and be bricks, stone, or concrete siding. A sidewalk would be extending along Morton Lane, as well as throughout the development. And again, we did attach the pattern book and development plan for the, for the property. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, with a few conditions. One, that they are required to submit a traffic study, and the developer is responsible for any improvements recommended by that study. We did look at Morton Lane, and we did look at improvements there to a three-lane section with a sidewalk, and dedicate the right-of-way as required along Rocky Fork Ammival, basically to require the dedication of the right-of-way on Rocky Fork Ammival Road without the improvements there. The town is looking at that, as council's aware, and so, and we would just, if they would dedicate the right-of-way, that that would be folded into our project. Depending on the final uses for the commercial lots, additional parking may be required. They did look at parking, but looking pretty much just as a standalone retail-type use, so there maybe have to be additional parking, depending on what ends up being built there. And then all buildings will be required to meet design review regardless of the material shown. We want to just point that out to them. Again, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Tim, anything you want to add to this?
You know, and I think Kevin touched upon this when you're looking at the comprehensive plan, and this being a great spot, and being identified as a great spot for kind of that neighborhood commercial node. Not only, you know, there's a convenience store, gas station, that's, that would be part of the proposal, that would help service this area, and I would think, take some of the strain off of Ammival Road for folks stopping there, plus, you know, a couple of retail places that, potentially a restaurant, maybe a services-type thing, like a dry cleaners or whatnot, but just something that would serve that area in and of itself. And then when you look at the actual dwellings themselves, you know, we, we are, with, we have superior finishes as far as the brickstone, hardy, and when you look at the grounds as far as the walking areas, the amenities that are included, the green space, it's a good fit. And then, you know, one other thing that I guess struck me as we were talking about it, when you're looking across the street, and you're looking at Blakeney and some of the homes there that we anticipated being the $300,000 to $400,000 range, they're actually closer to $500,000 and $600,000. So, this gives an opportunity for ownership that's more reasonable, as far as the townhomes, and there are actually other townhomes in, in the area that have done quite well as far as being sold and lived in. So, for all of those reasons, I supported this plan.
Questions or comments from counsel?
I have a question. The, uh, density per acre, is that figured on just the area of the residential, or is that figured on the entire parcel?
Just on the area for residential.
I like the use of the green space, the buffer zones, they're dedicating right-of-way, I mean, it's an interesting-looking little development there.
You good?
Me? Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Mayor, I'm going to remove myself from item one and item two.
Okay. A motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item two goes along with item one, it's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 54, parcels 48.00, 48.03, and 50.02, to go from R-3 to a PUD. It's requested by Jennifer Speck. The property's requested to be rezoned, contain approximately 5.92 acres, and are located on Rocky Fork Ammival Road and Morton Lane. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, I really have anything additional to say on this one, this is just those, the three parcels that are highlighted there in yellow, and the same conditions that were recommended with the annexation, this would be, would be just to rezone these from R-3 to the PUD. So, and again, planning commission did review this and recommended approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin, or Tim, anything else you want to add to this?
No, I think I covered it with the last-
With the first one?
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item three, it's consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the approved PUD for property located on tax map 28, parcel 72.07, requested by Alan Jones. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 1.76 acres and is located on Isabella Lane, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
These are, this is an amendment to an existing approved PUD. This was on Isabella Lane, kind of between Rock Springs and President Place. Again, the, the plan use plan has a Sam Ridley Parkway quarter area, that's kind of our character that we're looking at here, and, and the existing PUD and this proposed amendment really kind of fits from a use standpoint to plan, so either way. Surrounding zoning is C-2, and then the rest of this PUD, which is a climate-controlled storage building. The existing approved PUD for this lot, it showed about a 15,000 square feet commercial strip center. So, this proposed amendment is for a smaller building, about 8,200 square feet, as a restaurant. Access would be from Isabella Lane in two locations, both of which are shared with those adjoining properties, being the storage building to the south, and the Home Depot in that area to the north. Those are existing locations for access, and they're just going to tie onto those existing access points. The applicant is requesting as a part of this PUD amendment that the building be allowed to be constructed with a minimum of 75% primary materials and 25% accent materials, which is a deviation from the normal requirements, which of course they are allowed to request as a part of a PUD or a PUD amendment. Accent materials used would be wood and metal. This type of materials is normally limited to 10% of the overall building elevation, and they're, again, they're asking for, to be 25%. The applicant is also requesting, as a part of the PUD amendment, for more signage. Again, that is something that is evaluated with a PUD or a PUD amendment. And so, they have requested, basically the ordinance would allow for a, like, a single-use commercial building such as this to have up to 200 square feet total, and they're proposing for eight wall signs totaling about 464 square feet. Staff did, and I need to clear this up, staff did misspeak at the planning commission regarding the use of neon. Neon signs are allowed, but they are not allowed to have just bands of neon, you know, in windows. We kind of prohibit that, as well as the fluorescent lights and those kind of things.
Whoa, wait, say that again?
They, they are allowed under our ordinance, that you can't have neon signage, you cannot have, like, bands of neon outlining your windows. We had that problem some with neon, as well as with the fluorescent lights, the big bright LEDs and all that. They're not proposing that, but that was, that's, I was, I misspoke on the ordinance on that, so I wanted to clear that up. So, really, the only variance this requested is the total, overall total amount, not the type of signage we're talking about. We did, I did ask them as part of the review process if they were proposing any type of pole sign or monument sign, and they were not. And so, this, the only signage that would be on the parcel are the wall signs that are shown on the building, is what they're requesting for. The planning commission did recommend approval of this. Staff would recommend approval. Other requests, but not the proposed sign package. We did, that is more than twice what's allowed in the signed ordinance, and so we are concerned with the precedent that sets for future developments. And as part of that, in my recommendation, I did include, it's a rare occurrence that a variance is requested from the signed ordinance. I don't think we've had any in the last two or three years even. I believe that's because the ordinance is fair to business owners, and it still maintains limits to keep the aesthetics of the town in good order. And so, I expressed my concerns somewhat at the planning commission, maybe not as vocal as I should have, but I did. Also, we talked a lot about the planning commission, about the architectural materials. You know, that is something, I felt like the applicant had really stepped up from what they have built, every other place they've built, and I felt like the, the overall building aesthetic, I didn't have any issues with that, but I do have concerns about the signage. So, I wanted to bring that to the planning, or through the counsel. Fully respect the planning commission and their recommendation to you, and it's up to the counsel. We will administer whatever you all approve, but I did want to bring that up.
So, you're good with building material, but signage, you would be more comfortable keeping it in line with what our ordinance currently is?
That's correct.
Got it. Tim or Mark, anything you want to add from meeting?
Just a question, because I know we, we beat this up probably for 45 minutes the other night, planning commission. From a signage perspective, I know that's sort of their brand and their marketing, we talked about that, that evening quite, quite a while. Tell me about window signage, neon window signage that you often see, and how would that be counted if it's inside in the window, but not framing the window? I'm just, I guess I'm just looking for a way to, if it's not going to go on the wall board, can they still get that look from inside? Is it still considered signage and taking the place of-
I mean, the type of signs that you typically see in windows or on doors is, certainly on the front door, usually have the hours, and, or maybe you have a sign, it's open or closed, and those kind of things, and we certainly see those neon-type signs and all. And we generally, those kind of things, we don't count really towards that 200 square feet. The signage, it's really what's on the walls. There is a limitation for some uses, not really this use, for how much signage you can put in the windows, because primarily the Packers Liquor type use, which obviously doesn't apply here.
Kevin, is it the amount of signage that's a concern as well?
The overall amount, I mean, I mean-
Sounds like it's double.
The fact that they have eight signs, that, that part doesn't bother me, the eight signs, it's the total square footage.
Right, so we talked about backlit signs versus neon the other night, because we weren't sure neon was applicable at that time, it sounds like it is now.
And-
So, those are just some of the things we tossed around, but that's why I asked about the window signage.
I guess my thing is if, and I know it's give and take, but it sounds like we're given on what they can actually put on the building, and if staff's not comfortable with the amount of signage, that's a concern.
So, Kevin, you mentioned they're not going to have a pole or monument sign. If they were going to have that, would that also factor into the 200 square feet?
Yes.
Or would they be able to have that plus 200 square?
It's 200 square feet for standalone-
And it includes the whole monument, so the fact that they're not having that is really not relevant.
It really doesn't. I mean, it gives them, they can do more, obviously do more wall signage because of that.
So, sorry, what I can't, what I can tell the counsel is, Kevin's right, we, normally a signed variance comes through BZA, and we had one three or four years ago, A-plus gas station in front of Nissan. They had a unique situation with road frontage on three sides, and they were looking for signs on the front and the back of the building, because they had road frontage on three sides. We granted a small variance, and I want to say it was like 10 or 15% variance, it wasn't much. They ended up reducing overall size sign to be able to have multiple signs, but as far as I'm aware, that's the only one we've ever approved, as long as I've been on the BZA, and it was still not double or anywhere near this amount. Also, with three road frontages, I felt like it was kind of an extenuating circumstances. This building is in a curve, so there is kind of two different views, I guess, but I'm not sure that that would justify in the case of front, rear and front side roads, road frontage.
But if you take a pylon sign, take the square footage, that the pylon sign is not going to be added into this, add that to the building, that really makes an excessive amount on the building itself.
Yeah, because normally, if you only have 200 square feet, and let's say 50 of that or 80 of that is a, is a monument or a pole sign, you would normally only have 150 feet on the building. So, it's going to make the building look like it's got three or four times other buildings around.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Will we approve?
Do I have a second? Are we approving, subject to the concern?
I'm sorry, yes, subject to staff recommendations.
So, okay.
But were staff recommendations-
Staff recommendations were-
Staff recommendations or planning commission?
No, I think it would be staff, what Kevin said now.
Right.
With the signs.
But that what you're meaning? With the signage at the 200 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we've got a motion, did we get a second?
So, I will second the motion with the signs not exceeding 200 square feet.
Okay.
That, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I thought so. That's why I was thinking in that way, to make sure.
And Kevin, that is the correct amount, right, of our ordinance?
Yes.
So, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can they still go to BZA for an additional amount of signage? I mean, granted, we know the council's not going to let them double it or anything like that, so I don't think that the BZA would either, but by the same token, I mean, there are acceptable variances which the BZA, I'm sure, uses from time to time, and is that allowable after us turning this down?
I mean, under our ordinance, when there is a PUD like this, signage is evaluated with the PUD. And sometimes it is, we're going to just comply with what the ordinance, the signed ordinance allows for C-2 or whatever, and that's all we're talking about doing. This is, since this was over and above, we had to look at it separately. And so, because of that, as a PUD, now defer to Jeff, but to me, I think that's something that this council is setting the parameters with, when this, within this zone, they can only do that, and they, as a PUD, I don't think they can go to BZA, but I may be overruled, and that's fine. That would be my opinion, because of how our ordinance is written for PUDs. And that's mixed-use PUD, not PRD. PRD, they follow the residential rules, PCD, they follow the commercial rules, but within a PUD, it's evaluated as a part of the PUD.
And I know we discussed this at length the other night, predominantly, the front of the building is like 95% design review compliant, right? It's, it's the accents on the sides. We even discussed the life storage building being behind, it's not, that's- It's not, that's a, that's a huge hill right there. Seeing any part of the back of that building is probably going to be nil at some point, if not already. The property side to the Home Depot there has all the rental equipment out on that side. So I, I don't recall how much signage they were trying to put, if anywhere else but on the front. And you might, you might be able to tell me, Kevin, do you recall?
Looks like there's a little on the side with the drive, with the drive-through.
There is some on with the drive-through, I'm trying to get to.
And what's the total again, total signage?
400.
464.
464 versus 200.
I mean, the majority of it is on, you know, the Isabella Lane side or the side that's kind of angled and facing kind of the Home Depot parking lot and the gas station. That's the majority of it for sure. There is, I think there is one side, one side says drive, has the drive-through with a couple of the, kind of the smaller kind of pendant type signs. And that would be the side, the drive, that's, that's the, that would be the side facing the storage building is where those would be. So the majority of them are on Isabella Lane or the other side that faces the parking lot.
So Jeff, to answer the question, I don't know if we clearly heard, can they come to BZA still or not? Or do you want to check it first?
I think the question is, number one, in, in a matter of time, so two years from now, say something changes, even new owner, new type of business, I don't think they would forever be banned from coming back and asking for sign variance.
Would that be an amendment to the PUD or would it be a BZA?
I would call it a BZA at that, at that point. I don't think they'd have to bring back a whole PUD amendment just to add a sign out there of a different type. Granted, our Board's zoning appeals has been very in tune with the council vision and direction in the ordinance. And so I would say at least in the current time, if they attempted that within the next year or so, and under the same situations, besides the argument being made that they should not be allowed to do so, I do believe it would probably be a waste of time and money on the applicant's part, because knowing the BZA as I do, they're going to, you know, I can't tell you for sure how they're going to do, but I can tell you if history repeats itself, that would be without much success.
Did I, did I hear Steve, that you said that you had another business that came before BZA that was at the cap, and you guys allowed about 10 or 15 more percent?
Right. We gave, I want to say they went to 240 or 250, something like that, so maybe 20%, but yeah, there was, their request initially was a lot like this one, like 400. And we ended up negotiating and working out some parameters where they reduced sign size to keep the, the number of signs they wanted, that kind of thing. But we did grant a small variance, and that was the reason I was asking is, you know, as the chairman of the BZA, I think the rest of the board would consider a minor variance if there was just cause, if there was a reason, you know, the corner might be, you know, whatever, there could be a reason to maybe give them a variance that, that at least the BZA would listen to. But 468, that's going to be hard to justify no matter what you do.
It was a three-sided business.
It was a three road frontages, yeah.
Okay. Well, and I'll just tell you that when I initially was reading the planning commission packet, and I was reading the description of this, my thought was no. I mean, on the whole project. And then I searched online and looked at some of the other champions around town, around, not town, around the states where they're located. And then I, I looked at the actual, you know, packet with the design. And this, to me, and I think Mark may have said, this could be a flagship model for it. And I think what they're trying to do, it's a marriage of that old throwback fishing camp, you know, kind of tavern place, fish on the side of the road in Mississippi or, or somewhere rural where folks pulled in, they got their food, and they kind of hung out for a while to this modern look. And so when, when I was looking at it from that perspective, and we asked the question of Kevin, you know, are we allowed within a PUD to make an exception as far as signage? You know, the answer was yes. And believe me, Kevin, I, I heard you that you weren't and staff wasn't recommending it. And it was one of those things where, you know, I just felt a little bit differently. But I don't have a problem with what everyone's saying here now. But this is a really nice addition to that area. And I think Mark said it best when he talked about, okay, we've got a, a storage facility, a nice one, but then we've got a Home Depot parking lot, and you're going to have to look past all the rental equipment to look in there. So I do see this as a, a upgrade to the area, plus just the retail aspect of it and, and the tax dollars that I, I feel this will be very successful that we'll see as a town.
Kevin, does the, the logo on the tower, is that counting as part of their sign as well?
Yeah.
And do we know how much of the 400 is that item alone?
I did it one time, I don't have it on top of that.
I'm looking at the architectural diagram.
That's exactly what I asked.
If you look at the words and the signage that's actually advertising their businesses, if you took out the, the item on the tower, the, the logo on the tower, how much are they really over at that point? And so it may just be a matter of, like you said, branding, that's a key part of their branding, so there may be an opportunity for, to see, you know, justification there, I don't know.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor?
I, I will say this, my personal opinion would be that we have, in the past, sign, or sign variances have gone through BZA, and I, I would like to see it go that route, rather than be included in this PUD, because then the PUD would have to change if that ever changes, business closes, a new business comes in, et cetera. I think to be more consistent would be to send the, the sign varies through BZA, would be my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I think as Kevin said, is the signs are, because it is a PUD and you're, and you're initiating it now, that's why it's to be considered now. And I think the BZA, if it was close in time to when planning commission and council approved it, I, I think that would have a heavy bearing on the BZA's decision. But two or three years from now, if things change, more buildings come up, those types of things, and maybe even block what you're talking about, block the view, I think that's when it really becomes under the, the BZA's purview. But I, I think it's fully, fully proper for this evening, under the PUD, to, to decide it, but maybe the, maybe after it's built, they decide that there's other things that weren't talked about, and I don't think you'd have to do a PUD amendment to do that.
I'd like to say Kevin and I had discussions about this after the planning, because the way it came through planning, it came forward as an approval. And our biggest concern, and Kevin stated this, and I just want to reiterate it, one of the things we're concerned about is, because it is in the, the commercial district there on Sam Ridley, we've had other buildings that have asked for prominent signage, and we've denied those. And we have other businesses that we know will be coming that are going to be looking at, you know, so our, our biggest concern is in that district, setting a precedent, especially that's more than doubling the size of the allotted signage on these buildings, does give us some concern from the staff level. We respect that the council has full, you know, authority to, to approve whatever you see fit on this building, but, you know, it, it's a fine line between the branding of the, the business and the image of what we're trying to portray in that, in that district too. So just, I just want to make that observation.
Yeah. Precedent is a big factor. I mean, honestly, any business could be able to use, they, they could use the same argument, right?
Absolutely.
It's part of our branding.
And we, we had a couple of businesses across the street that we actually had to speak to them about the signage that they'd put up and make some changes. So it, it does give us a little concern staff level.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess my only other question, Brian, since you mentioned it, maybe Kevin, we, we don't have a lot of instances, there's only been a handful that have come to BZA asking for a variance. But is that because they're being told by staff firsthand that 200 is the limit and we usually don't approve those? Is, is the number too low, and maybe, maybe it does need to be adjusted? Is there enough requests that we're not even hearing at BZA or council? And I, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're, you know, it's not, 200 isn't fair, and we need to be looking at that anyway. Just a question, not suggesting.
Well, I, I can, I can say we, we rarely have anyone coming to us.
So we're not hearing it, you know, it's hard to stay under that, or nobody's complaining? I got you.
We used to have, and this is, our, our sign ordinance, we adopted it in most recent version.
Kevin, I'm sorry, can we recess for?
Can I do this in mid, can I do this with a motion and a second?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that talk.
That's okay. So we are.
I didn't realize what time it was, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We are going to recess our meeting for an item with SRF that we need to have discussion and vote on. So Mike, I will turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you. This is the public meeting for a couple of SRF projects that we have. SRF does require us to have a public meeting and give information to everybody about the projects and all the fun stuff. And Jerome is here to talk about both those projects. And then towards the, later on, after the public meeting, those items will be on the agenda for voting. So I'll turn it over to Jerome Dempsey.
Mayor, Council, Jerome Dempsey, Thomason Hutton, 502 Hazelwood Drive, Smyrna. We have two projects that we're going to hold a public meeting on, and I've got a list of items I need to go over. The first project is the sewer rehab in basin A8 and A9, which is over in the Morton Lane area, the Hicks, Hicks Lane area, the whole part of town. Rehabbing that sewer in that area, which will consist of about 2,575 linear feet of main rehabilitation by pipe bursting. We have about 2,200 feet of 10-inch gravity sewer line that we're going to upsize to That's the description of the project. Total cost of this, estimated construction cost is 800,000 for this project. And the loan amount for this project, state revolving loan, is 800,000, term is for 20 years, and the interest rate of 1.92%. The project schedule, design is basically completed, and we look to implement construction late summer, early fall. The short-term impact versus long-term benefits, there will be some inconvenience in the area for excavation and traffic, but the long-term benefits, we're hoping to relieve line capacity in that area, and I know HG's familiar with this area, Coleman Street down through there. So this line that goes down Coleman actually feed, will feed into this 15-inch line and try to alleviate some of the capacity in that area. So this is first of, you know, other projects. Impact on user fees regarding repayment of the state revolving loan, the current user rates are sufficient to repay the loan. So that, that is the description, the loan of this project. And I guess, Mike, do, do we want to ask for questions on this project? And then I'll go on to the next project.
Council, any questions on this one?
How many areas do we have which we will have to move to after this one?
If I recall, there's probably about 12 sub-basins that we've delineated in the city. The next project I know that utilities is pushing for is the trunk line that goes down Hart's Branch, which this area feeds into as well. That feeds into the back of the wastewater plant. You know, we've done some out around the airport, we've done some off of Hazelwood in the past. So this is the next priority based on the needs.
Okay. Other questions for Jerome? Do we have to hold a public, a public hearing for this or just make an announcement?
I mean, ask for questions.
Just an announcement?
Yeah.
Okay. So the second item you need to discuss?
Yes, the second project is the Ammerville Road Sturt Creek trunk line that traverses from the area of I-24 right around Courier Place out towards 840. The project description on this project, it's approximately 41,400 linear feet of sewer line ranging, ranging in size 12-inch, 18, 20-inch, and 24-inch diameter sewer with 101 manholes. Now, this project is just in the planning and design stage right now. The amount of the state revolving loan for this project for planning and design, there'll be numerous easements, you know, throughout, is 1,760,000. And the term for that loan is five years, and the interest rate through state revolving loan is 1.21%. The project schedule, we look to, once design is implemented, looking at a 18 to 24-month period for design and probably easement acquisitions. The short-term impact versus long-term benefits, again, there'll be disturbance in the area, hindrance to traffic off Ammerville Road. But the long-term benefits is that it will take off two lift stations that we have in place now, Amberton and Morton Lane, which will feed into that and open that area up for development. Impact on user fees regarding repayment of the state revolving loan, current user rates are sufficient to repay the loan. And that is it with that project, if we've got any questions.
Questions for Jerome on this one? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we will reopen our council meeting and go back to item three, which we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval with staff comments, but only at the 200 square foot of signage. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item four, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, part of parcel 33.00. To go from C2 to PRD, it's requested by AUB Eshak. The property requested to be rezoned contains 13.85 acres and is located on Todd Lane and DeLacy Lane. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request to just have frontage on Todd Lane and DeLacy Lane. Overall parcel also has frontage on Old Nashville Highway, but that area, which is about 5.18 acres, is proposed to remain C2. Land use plan is the Old Nashville corridor character area, which would support a mix of the smaller scale retail and personal service uses, as well as townhomes and attached residential. Shrining zoning is a mix of C2, R1, R2, and PRD, which is Talia Trace. There is a cemetery on the parcel, which is included with the rezoning request, but that will be divided off as part of this development. And the family would maintain that part of the property. The original request at PRD was for 100 townhomes, which is a dense, with a density of about 7.22 per acre. As recommended by the planning commission, the development has 94 townhomes with a density of 6.79 per acre. Access would be from DeLacy Lane, as well as an extension of Mason Tucker Drive from Todd Lane to Old Nashville Highway through the development. All the units would be for sale, and there would be an HOA with the common space managed by a third party. A traffic study was submitted for the development, which also included a traffic signal warrant study. Study did recommend a three-lane section from Mason Tucker Drive with a four-way stop at the Todd Lane-Mason Tucker intersection, but a traffic signal was not warranted. The proposed townhomes would be 1,350 square feet minimum, 74 would have garages, 20 would not have garages. Did attach a traffic study and the pattern book and everything that was submitted as a part of this. Planning commission did recommend approval with some conditions. There, there were eight units that are shown on the, kind of on the west side of the Mason Tucker Drive extension. And basically that, that those would be flipped so that they would face kind of Old Nashville Highway and Mason Tucker Drive with the parking in the rear. This would be, so that the, the backs of those units would back up to the backs of the units on, that would be facing Todd Lane there. There are six units shown on the plans that you have in your packet, there are six units shown, kind of. There are six units shown kind of between Todd Lane, or there also would be fronting Todd Lane, that those would be removed and that that area would have playground space added into it. All the back patios are required to be fenced with a vinyl fence and that the minimum square footage of the townhomes is 1,350 square feet. So, with those conditions, staff would recommend approvals. And we'll add, I had to talk with the engineer for the project. This obviously, this had to come to you Friday morning. So, we, they will be working on revisions. If you all pass this tonight for first reading, we would have revised plans for you on the workshop and second reading to reflect those changes.
Hey, Kevin, would you make it a little clearer as far as the, the units that we made out? You may even have to walk over there and show, I just want to make sure.
The ones that were eliminated?
Yes.
Those on the east side?
Right here.
Those are gone?
Yes.
The other ones are flipped?
Yeah, the ones that were flipped from the east, they'd been just rotated.
Yeah.
And the reason being, we had people looking in the backs of other ones. And that would have been the same thing on the east side with those units down below it. So, we had those removed, well, requested those be removed and-
Turn that into green space. The, on the west side of the street, we had the bottom row flipped to face the Old Nashville Highway.
Could y'all talk about buffer material between that C2 and residential?
Well, and I don't think we dove into that too deeply with buffering, but we know commercial-
They'll be required. That would be something that, when the commercial area develops-
But in the meantime, if it doesn't, that-
Yeah. Kevin, can you speak to varying away from the major thoroughfare plan?
Yes. Yeah, the major thoroughfare plan has this, has Mason Tucker Drive tying into Old Nashville Highway at Rocky Fork Road. And that would be the ideal location and that's what staff would love to have happen. There is a TVA easement there with poles that are in the way. And the ability to actually make that connection is not really a viable thing that it actually happens. So, we looked at it from the standpoint of where's the best place? And it made sense to us with Talia Trace coming on the other side of the street to tie in at that intersection where Talia Trace would be tying in. One of the two locations, but at the southernmost connection there. And so, that's, we asked them to look at that and so, that's where they showed the connection.
So, you think the TVA lines are an immovable object?
Yes.
And then, okay, I see you got Talia Trace on that particular slide there.
Yes. Mason Tucker, that would be the public street. The other streets internally would be private, but Mason Tucker would be built, would be a-
And I can't remember, does that street on Talia Trace go through and then to Rocky Fork Road?
It does not go to Rocky Fork Road, but it goes to a road that, that it will come from Rocky Fork and hit, it'll be perpendicular to Rocky Fork. And there will be a connection to Rocky Fork Road through there, through that development, yes.
Kevin, just speaking to Steve's question, I think Mayor's kind of question too, was the buffering portion of it. I know we didn't talk about that at great length because we knew the commercial would have to do it anyway. Do you see a need? We don't know when that'll develop. We don't know when C2 will develop. Do you see a need there from a staff perspective to, and how far is that really off the road?
I'm trying to see if I can get to the, something that has a little bit of scale. My memory is, it's, I don't know, 200 feet or more off the, off of Old Nashville Highway, I believe. There, the site plan, it's on page 11 of the packet, kind of shows some potential building locations and all on there. But that's just potential, we don't know exactly.
Well, I think that's his question, Steve's question.
But as far as buffering, we didn't see the need at this time to add buffering. We didn't recommend it to them or ask for it.
Well, you do have some natural vegetation as it is now.
There is on some of the lots, there is some trees.
And then you have some elevation too.
Yeah. And you're limited somewhat with trees. I mean, that whole area has, is crossed two or three different locations with some major electrical easements, TVA and other ones.
We're not going to have trees under there.
Right.
Kevin, on the, the road-
Not on the name of it, what it says, what is it?
Talia Trace.
Talia Trace. Is it lining up with the one across the street?
I don't know if it shows up. This is a, this is just basically their, their, their drawing, geo-referenced on the county parcel data. So, once we, if this is approved and we get to the site plan stage, yes, it would be lined up.
Okay.
We would make sure that happens, yeah.
But really, who's going to want to try to go straight across? You'd do better to go down to the light at Rocky Fork rather than get killed on a straight cross.
Most likely that's the case. We were trying to minimize another, another driveway. At least it would be the same location, but the driveway across the street, minimize those conflict points.
Other questions for Kevin?
Well, and maybe just to point out, the, the C2 section that's just past Mason Tucker there, that was originally R2. We, when we originally saw this, we had, did we not have R2 that were, that fronted Old Nashville Highway? Or am I remembering incorrectly?
We did have some, there was some in more, more of that area, that 5.18 acres. Some, more of that was, was part of the requested, the original request for PRD.
Yeah, and there was not, I don't think there was a C2 section that extended that far either.
I don't think, I can't recall exactly. There was 125 townhomes, but there was more of the, more of that area that's now C2 was proposed as part of the PRD. There still was some C2 on there, but there was less of it than what is proposed here.
Is there any provisions or notations made about the cemetery?
The family wanted to maintain ownership of that. We did include it with the rezoning because otherwise it would have the C2 zoning and wouldn't make any sense. And obviously, and it's not large enough to even meet the lot size. So, we included in the, in the rezoning. Again, the family wanted to maintain ownership of that. So, they're, that would not be included if with, once this, if this is rezoned, that would be divided off.
Will it need to be fenced? The cemetery?
I would, if I were there, I would want to fence it, sure. I don't know if that's something we, we looked at as far as requirements in the PRD, but certainly they could fence that up, yeah.
Kevin, will we get another look at the product itself? This is just a rezoning. Are we finalizing their elevations?
Well, as far as the materials, they're looking at a brick-hardy mix. I mean, that's really what they're showing.
Well, one of the questions I know I asked in planning was the roof lines, things like that.
Yeah, and that is, you're right. And as far as the, so there's some relief. They are going to provide some more information with that recent metal. If this passes tonight, they're going to have some additional. I forgot about that. They are, will be submitting that with the revisions that they will be submitting for second reading.
I would, I would just encourage some architectural study a little bit. What I'm seeing the renderings here for looks pretty repetitive, I guess. You know, I don't know what, how to describe it. It's, it's looking, the backs of them are- One of the reasons I asked that question the other night, we didn't have anything even in color. But now, I'm seeing a little bit in color and architecturally, it's, I'd like to see some angles, maybe some mix, things like that.
I don't think it's what we've been seeing from a lot of the other developments that have been coming in.
I'm just asking them to, when you submit, try to submit something maybe that offers some attractiveness that, I don't know if I'm seeing it here. I'm just speaking for myself.
Again, I know that they did, there was, they heard that discussion the other night and they were, they were, they told me they were going to be submitting, including that with the recent metal.
Yeah, I would just remind them of that, I guess, in this way.
Other questions or comments?
Did you say about the patio, that they're, the enclosed patio?
They're enclosed with the vinyl fence, yes.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'm going to move we approve, maintaining the staff comments.
Move we approve with staff comments? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Discussion? Kevin, who normally is responsible for fencing the cemetery? Is that usually the family or is that usually the, is that usually the developer?
If the developer, if it just incorporates it into his development, we've had that sometimes. Typically, they'll, they'll either fence them, usually, a lot of times they end up being kind of her and single-family type situations for the most part. And typically, that, it gets included, sometimes it gets included with a lot that they sell or sometimes they keep it, do keep it separate if they haven't identified someone who is going to maintain it. But they, they are usually the ones who do it in that regard. It's really kind of between the developer and the, and the family, how they want to work that out. All that it matters to us either way.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 55, parcel 7.02, to go from I-2 to C-2. It's requested by Hardik Patel. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.94 acres and is located at the corner of Ammerville Road, Poplarwood Road, and Seminary Road. The recommendation also includes the rezoning of parcel 7.01 owned by Consolidated Utility District to go from I-2 to C-2, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, has three road frontages, and they have requested to be rezoned from I-2 to C-2. This was a, kind of a leftover vacant industrial tract. The property to the north was developed, but this parcel has never been developed. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is I-2, R3, R1, and PRD, which are the Belmont and Preserve at Stewart Creek PRDs in town in RM in Rutherford County. Staff did recommend the inclusion of parcel 701 if this, if the requested parcel is rezoned. It's an approximately 3,000-square-foot parcel owned by Consolidated Utility District. It does have an inactive water lift station on it. That existing use is allowed in both districts, so it wouldn't be losing anything there. I don't know what their long-term plans are for that piece of property. I did contact CUD staff. They didn't indicate that they have no issue with the rezoning, but they did ask, or did say that the board would need to look at it. And so, the board meets on April 26th and we'll be sending them that information that they need to submit to the, the board. So, hopefully by the second reading, you will know something, or actually, even the workshop, we would know something from them if they have any issues with this. I don't anticipate they will, it's not really going to affect them in any negative way. But it did make sense for us to have an industrial, little piece of industrial zoning there on such a small tract of land. So, again, Planning Commission did recommend approval and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this one? Tim or Mark, anything if you want to add?
You know, I think maybe just, if you look back at the history, I think there was maybe an anticipation that the warehousing that you saw closer to 1 mile and through the curve and, and really to Ammerville Road exit, there would be a continuation of it. And of course, that didn't happen, residential came in. At one point, the I-2 that is north of this parcel functioned as a recycle center. And I'm not sure at this point if it's, if it's still in operation or if it's, if it has an industrial operation of any sort going on.
There was a business at one time, not the recycling center, it was something else.
Yeah.
They cleaned it up quite a bit.
So, when we look at this, if it, if it were to remain I-2, of course, that would open it up for any industrial-type usage. And the way that we've seen the development there, it just does not seem a fit. This seems more appropriate, especially considering the roadway and considering the residential that's built out around it. So, you know, for those reasons, the Planning Commission supported this rezoning. It's sort of softening the zone, really.
Yeah.
And then, you've got the traffic light as well that kind of, whatever goes there is going to have traffic halting and so forth. The Preserve at Stewart Creek is across the street. Belmont is to the east side. And then, as you turn there, you get back into a housing area, R3, which goes into the back of the school. So, we just thought it made more sense for the use that's being requested than the use that was in place.
Did they have a plan yet?
They indicated at the Planning Commission that they were anticipating, if this is rezoned, to do a gasoline service station there. Obviously, if it's rezoned, it can be anything allowed in C-2 certainly, but that is their intended use at this time.
So, my only, that's kind of what I was thinking that you were going to say. So, my only question is the connection onto Ammerville Road at that point. Obviously, that's really close to the red light right there, Seminary or Poplarwood already. That's a state decision, right? They would have to go through TDOT to get connectivity to Ammerville Road?
Yeah, that would be a state decision. We would, as staff, we would want, be sure we look at it closely because of the curve. As well there, and you've got the right-turn lane that turns into the light there that you're, a big portion of the road frontage here that we want, don't want to conflict with certainly. So, it's something we have to look at really closely, certainly, but it would be a TDOT decision ultimately.
It's a good point, Steve, because you've got residential right before it.
Yeah.
That has no traffic light, right? So, site plan, if it ever came to that, site plan would-
Yeah, the, the one little driveway just there on the, I guess, the end there, is that, is that an actual cut or would that?
Honestly, I don't know what that was for. There is a little drive that comes off of there. I don't know if that was from, when there was a house there before or something like that potentially. Yeah, there is, there is a drive, comes off of Seminary that goes to the, to the water lift station.
Okay. Now, that, that would be my, my only concern, and I think that's something we deal with at site, site plan once there's a development. But it's, and it's going to, it would be that same problem whether it's I-2 or C-2. So, that's not specific to C-2, right?
Right.
Except C-2 may have more egress and egress traffic.
You could potentially have higher, higher traffic impact uses with that. And in part, if it is not being a gasoline station, we're going to ask for a traffic study because it's going to hit that traffic, our thresholds we would-
Yeah, ideally, it would exit out on the Seminary Road and force them to the light, ideally.
Exactly. And I-2 could be larger truck traffic.
Yeah, can be a lot bigger.
And so, it's, it's your trade-off really.
Maybe, yeah, maybe less traffic but bigger vehicles.
Yeah, slower and bigger, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is packaged liquor board report. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is consideration of items to be sold at surplus sale through GovDeals and online auction company, Rex?
Mayor, Council? In your packet is a list of surplus items that we'd like to sell at auction. The list includes town vehicles, seized vehicles, computer items, and other equipment. The town seeks permission to conduct an online auction to sell these surplus items. The auction will be advertised in the Murfreesboro Post, on the town's website, and on Channel 3. All the surplus items will be sold through GovDeals and online auction company. And we asked that you would approve this.
Questions for Rex on this? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
For motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item D, which is what we took the recess for. And it's a consideration of resolution and corresponding SRF loan documents authorizing and providing for the financing of the next phase of the INI sewer, sewer rehab project. Mike, anything you need to add?
Yes, ma'am, real quick. So, we have the authorizing resolution. Emily spoke to SRF a day or two ago and we should have the loan docs within a couple of weeks. But the authorizing, if you approve the authorizing resolution- But the authorizing, if you approve the authorizing resolution, that gives you the authority to go ahead and sign the loan docs.
Great. Any questions for Mike? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item M is consideration of resolution and corresponding SRF loan documents authorizing and providing for the planning and design of the Ammival Road Stewart's Creek sewer expansion. Mike?
Yeah, just real quick on this one, this is just the planning and design loan. So if something happened and we did not move forward with the project, we would not, not use the money, and we would go back to SRF.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Mike. Anything under other tonight? Under status reports, you have your February shared tax. And we have the state shared and the local sales tax together. Right, Rex?
Yes, ma'am. February local sales tax was one million, three hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. That gives us a projected one point four, well, one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollar projected budget surplus. February state sales taxes was six hundred and five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. That gives us a projected one million, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollar budget surplus. Finances are, are moving along very well.
Questions for Rex? Okay. Thank you, sir. Amber, anything tonight?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter and hope you have a good weekend filled with family and, and Jesus, so.
There you go.
That's it.
Brian?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, council, I have a couple of things I'd like to share with you. First, this is our National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I think Pastor York mentioned that in his prayer, and we are very thankful. We have a great group of professional dispatchers, and we're celebrating them this week. I will tell you, they've had a tough time lately. We have been down several dispatchers, and that's not just us. It seems to be a rash across most police departments right now. Chief and Jeff Craig and I are working diligently with some folks to try to get some people in here and get interviewed and get them up and running, but please understand that that's one of those jobs that you just don't walk in and Monday morning and be able to do the job if you was hired over the weekend. It's a, a lot of training and a lot of stuff that goes on. It is a very high-stress job. These people are very much unsung heroes. They're the voice of calm and reason on the end of a phone in most cases when people are at their very worst moments. So I give a lot of accolades to these folks in our police department for what we do and thank them, and they deserve being celebrated. This Friday, April the fifteenth, is, was just mentioned, we are entering into our Easter holiday weekend. And Friday, April the fifteenth, the town offices will be closed. We do want to remind folks that our fire, police, water treatment, wastewater treatment personnel, as well as our parks folks will be working. Golf course, I think, will still be open, but we will be closed here at Town Hall on Friday. A couple of points of personal interest I'd like to share with the council tonight. It's with heavy heart that I share with you. Jim Heath, one of our assistant chiefs at the fire department, and also Matt Heath, who works for our building and grounds. Jim's mother and Matt's grandmother passed away, and I think the service was Saturday. We extend a heartfelt prayer for those families. Also Dylan Gronbach, I hope I said that right, he is one of our firefighters. I had the opportunity to visit. His father passed away, and I visited with the family. I think the chief came by, visited with him at the funeral home, and again, we extend heartfelt prayers for those families in this time of loss. Couple of, of items I'd like to share, and congratulations. One is Lisa Brewer, who works for us at our court system, passed the bar exam. A big, big accomplishment, so. And then also, we have somebody sitting over in the front row in a red dress, Kathy Farrell, just recently became engaged. Very excited for Kathy.
What are you doing here?
But congratulations to Kathy, and as they move forward with their engagement, and there'll be more news, I think, to follow on that, I think, so. The last thing I have tonight, Mayor and council, is the love where you live. And if you'll notice on your chairs tonight, there was a T-shirt. Our employees, we talk about putting our, our money where our mouth is. Our employees will be going out and actually during Earth Day, picking up litter on the sides of the road, as well as a couple of our parks that we'll be doing. So we, we invite the council to wear their green shirts and come out and join us on that day if you're available. We will be working a four-hour shift in the town, and I think Kathy, we had, what, thirty, roughly thirty employees? Thirty-ish employees that have signed up to go out and help make Smyrna a nicer place to live. I have to tell you, was it, Tim, was it you that said tonight that you had a car in front of you on one of the exit ramps coming into Smyrna that chunked out a cup on the side of the road? I hope it doesn't stay there until we get there, but we will pick it up if we need to.
Tim chased him down.
I hope he did.
He said something about pit maneuver.
I almost kicked into about thirty years ago. Fortunately, better since.
Chief, I'm telling you, you got to deputize everyone else.
I think, I think the meeting, I think the meeting would have been fun tonight if you hadn't.
You know, folks, we have a beautiful community, and we have a lot to be proud of here in Smyrna, and I know I sound like I'm preaching every council meeting, but it is, you know, it's something we're battling not just here in Smyrna but across the state of Tennessee. There's just a, just a terrible issue of people not taking pride in our communities. And, you know, we will send people out, you know, through our workhouse relationship or through our own employee relationship, and we can literally go down Sammerly Parkway today, and by in the morning, it'll be trashed back up. I don't know why people choose to do that, but please make a concerted effort to take your trash with you, leave it in the car, take it to the service station, take it home, and put it in the garbage can where it belongs. If you're carrying trash or, or items in the back of your truck, secure the load down so that it's not blowing all over the road. And take a little pride and love where you live, and I will shut up with that.
Great. Jeff?
Happy Easter.
Great. Raquel?
Happy Easter, for one, and we had the Easter egg hunt this past Saturday. Thank you to Chief and to Mike Moss and all of the employees that came out and had to throw candy out for all the kids, and I think it was a good time had by all. It was a little chilly, but I think it was a very fun event. Also, I haven't had a couple of things, and I wasn't here at the workshop, so I do want to have a couple of acknowledgements that I need to, to mention, and one of them, Steve mentioned for me, was I was asked to be a guest speaker at Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church in Murfreesboro alongside Mrs. America LaShawn Dixon, and I'd like to thank them for the opportunity to come out for their Women's History Month celebration and speak. Also, the mayor spoke about Laverne Middle School also had an International Women's Day that we participated in, and I'd like to thank them for the invitation for that as well. And I also would like to thank Smyrna Elementary School. I was asked to be a part of their career wall, so I got to do that this week. And then Life Point Senior Conference, I was able to participate in that as well. And then yesterday, we had our budget retreat. So to all of the directors and the staff for putting that together, thank you. It was very informative, and again, thank you for all the hard work that you put into getting that information to us to be able to go over yesterday.
Great.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Um, was also going to mention the budget retreat yesterday. I mean, sitting down and looking at the budget and what we're, have to work with for the next year. It looks like all the directors and Brian and always especially Rex have done a really good job putting together a good budget, but, you know, something that always is prominent to me when we look at those budgets is the great amount that comes in on our sales tax. So I encourage you once again to shop local, because so much of our budget is derived, directly right in, it just, it, it turns itself back into our economy. Also, the Easter egg hunt was a lot of fun. It's always enjoyable to watch the kids get out and, and pick up candy. I mean, I, you know, they, it, it, it's hard to call it a hunt, but they find it. And outside of that, I do wish everybody a, a wonderful Easter, and let's not forget the reason for the season, and we can follow that with be kind. Thank you.
Tim?
I'll add my condolences and congratulations to our Smyrna family. I'll take it a little bit different direction from these guys. I think they covered the Easter egg and the budget retreat well. Mark and I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting at Hunter Industrial Fan on the airport property. It's an impressive facility. It was actually, this ribbon cutting was delayed by about two years for COVID, so the team there were excited, they were really ready to celebrate, and, you know, in speaking with the manager there, what, what struck me, he said, "We wanted to move to Smyrna. We wanted out of Davison County, and we wanted to do business in Smyrna." And if you look at what's going on at the airport and surrounding, it's a very dynamic time for our town.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks. Jerry?
Yeah, first of all, my condolences also to the Heath family and their loss, and also to Dylan and his loss. Certainly, our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. I also had the opportunity to go out to the Cedarstone Baseball for the opening or kickoff of that last weekend, and got to watch Brian throw out the first pitch, maybe roll the first pitch, I don't know, but.
It went across the plate.
Actually, it did not.
It did not bounce in front of the plate.
It, it, it did not bounce in front of the plate. That's correct.
I'm just glad you took the bullet for us and you threw it, because I'm sure we'd probably been in the same situation.
Just a bit outside. Depending on the batter.
It was a little high on left, I'll give you that. But it got to the plate.
It did.
Hey, I will say, it wasn't short. They got the smallest little tyke on the whole ball field to do the high kick.
Yeah, they did.
So he didn't have a big target. His target was a thumbtack.
I needed to skim out there as a target.
Something, something bigger for him.
But it was fun, it was cold, the kids had a great time, and Mike, thank you, and actually the, the Committee Association that put that on, so that was really nice. Also, as some of the others have mentioned, the Easter egg hunt on Saturday is always fun just to watch them, and I just like it the way it's set up in the different age groups and watch those kids go out and how each one has their own little strategy of what they're going to do. So that was, that was a lot of fun. Also, I did, I forgot to mention a minute ago, the Shrock family, Doe, Kepge, and Coy, and the loss of their mom, Mr. Rock. The, let's see, congratulations to Lisa and her and Danny, her passing the bar, and Kathy, congratulations to you as well. That's great. Look forward to seeing some of you out on Sunday at the luncheon there at the Town Event Center, and so look forward to seeing some people out there then, and just happy Easter to everybody.
Steve?
I'll start with happy Easter to everyone as well. Congratulations, Kathy. I sent you a text, I think, when you told us, but I'll continue to congratulate you every day if I have to, to get the point across, so congratulations. We also had the opportunity, and I know all of us at some point with the multiple events, to visit Smyrna Ready Mix's new headquarters a couple of times. We've had several events, including the ribbon cutting, and we, we had a private tour, which we got to endure. And then the, the reason I brought that up was just this past week, Mike Hollinshead was honored with a Boy Scout Award for the year. So congratulations to Mike and the Hollinshead family. I, I, you know, we, we kind of said it, I think, that day, but for everyone else to hear it, it, it makes us proud as a council, and I think I speak on behalf of all the council, that Mike and, and his, his sons who are local Smyrna residents, Smyrna High graduates, would choose to put their corporate headquarters back in Smyrna. They are in now sixteen states, so they had a lot of different options of where they could place a headquarters and where they could put that investment, and they chose to come home, and that, that means a lot to us, and, you know, we, we have a great partnership with Smyrna Ready Mix, and we hope that continues. So congratulations to Mike and Jeff and Ryan, and we appreciate what you guys are doing for the community. Let's see, Easter condolences for the, the family members at Smyrna that have lost loved ones. It's always tough. I don't, I don't think I can, I can't imagine the pain that, you know, you have to go through. I've been fortunate that my, my immediate family members have always been there with me, and I can't imagine the pain, so condolences for that. Again, happy Easter. I think I heard that the buffet is full, so I don't think any further reservations are available, so there will be one in Mother's Day. So if you miss this one, the chef would love to have you at Mother's Day. I can tell you that the reason it's full is because it's really good, so. Close to five hundred reservations. Five hundred reservations, wow, that's great.
So don't walk up, because we won't have room.
Yeah, they're, they're, they do not hold back open tables for people to walk up. It's, it's full. I think that's it. Mark?
Same condolences to all the families mentioned. I won't go into all the names again for time reasons, but we are thinking about them. Same congratulations to Kathy and Keith, and we're excited for you and being engaged, so congratulations on that. Congratulations to Keith as well. Class of seventy-five, lost a couple classmates, right, guys? Everett Rogers and Cecil Bell, we graduated with, and they passed away recently, so we want to remember those families. Thanks to all the directors that are in the room, and maybe the ones that aren't in the room, I think most of them are here, for a retreat yesterday that was very informative, and thank you guys for putting together your budgets and your packages. Chief, even yours looked good, so thank you for doing that. I appreciate all you guys. You didn't get everything you wanted, did you, Chief?
No.
You're doing a good job of holding your distance.
We do want to say thank you to all the directors, and Rex, I'd like to direct a little bit towards you with our finances as well. You're overseeing our finances in a very responsible way. And you're keeping the town financially healthy, and just for the public's perception, we do have audits, so there's a lot of questions sometimes whether we get often audited, and we do. And that keeps our credit rating strong, helps us borrow money in a very cheap way when we need to. We keep our debt low. So Rex, thank you and your department out there for, for watching over the money for us. Congratulations to Lisa Brewer for passing the bar, and happy Easter to everybody. One last thing that HG touches on all the time, shopping local. You know, as we sit in our retreat, we look at our numbers, and actually, sales tax is one of the big incomes that we get. Biggest, better than property tax, right? Our property taxes are very affordable when you look around the communities around us. Ours is cheaper than our neighbor to the north in Laverne, and also cheaper than Murfreesboro. So it's a good quality of life that you have here. A lot of it is because of shopping local and keeping our expenses down. Growth is not always a bad thing when you look at it that way. Sometimes people don't like growth, but sometimes when you look at it, it does help keep your taxes in a better position, so. Happy Easter to everybody. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Great. Looks like we have a picture from opening day, so was that the?
That was not, that was not the kid that he had to throw.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, that town doesn't look too small to me.
He's about three times as big as Brian's target.
He's a grown man compared to Brian's target.
That one's as tall as Amber.
Yeah, that's right.
Fun size. That's right. A couple of housekeeping items. Town Hall is an early voting polling location, and early voting begins tomorrow, April the thirteenth, and continues through April the twenty-eighth. the thirteenth, and continues through April the twenty-eighth. It'll be Monday through Friday from ten AM to six PM, Saturdays eight AM until noon, and if you will please enter the parking lot behind town hall from Pinto Drive, and signage will be directing you to the voting location. I do not believe that they're open on Good Friday, are they? Is, I don't think voting is going to be open on Good Friday.
I remember from the time there wasn't one.
I, I think that's right. So, but I encourage you, I don't care who you're going to vote for, please go out and exercise your right to vote, and if you are not registered to vote, get out and register to vote. You won't be able to vote in this election, but please exercise that right. And also, just so you know, you can vote on Election Day and at early vote at any polling location in Rutherford County. You do not have to go to the assigned one that is on your voting card. Second, I think a lot have talked about this today, but thank you to the Smyrna Fire Department, Police, Parks and Natural Gas Departments for another great Easter egg hunt. A couple of cute pictures there. We had quite a few out for the day. I was really worried it was going to be really cold, but wasn't too bad, so thanks to everybody involved. We are excited to be able to partner again with TriStar Stonecrest Medical Center for our Kids Safety Day. This will be on Saturday, May the seventh, from nine to one at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. We'll have food, fun, children's safety information giveaways and more, so join us on Saturday, May the seventh, from nine to one. I would like to say a thank you to Brett Beauregard, I think tonight, nope, is he? One more. So tonight and one more meeting, you all don't get to see Brett. Brett stays in the control room, but Brett does a phenomenal job for us, and he is going to be moving on to doing some other things, but I just wanted Brett to know how much I have appreciated working with him. The one thing, not one person up here said when they talked about the budget retreat that is the most important thing.
Our food.
The food was delicious. It absolutely was delicious, but there is going to be no tax increase this year, so we are excited about that, and I hope that our town will be excited about that, and I know Rex will talk about that at our next meeting when he gives the overview. So, but we work really hard to be good stewards of your taxpayer dollars and to be conservative, but also to provide you the quality of life that we think is important.
Mayor, I forgot one thing that I wanted to say tonight, and somebody just texted me and reminded me that, and it's on my notes, but we have somebody in the audience that's engaged, but we also have a pretty significant anniversary tonight, and that's our police chief and his lovely bride.
Oh, very nice. Congratulations and happy anniversary. Chief, did you get her gift?
I learned from Todd.
Thank you. Oh, so good, okay. Oh, good, good, good.
Say, if you learned from Todd, you didn't learn anything.
So, there you go.
I'll be happy to.
That was Lynn that texted him.
Your wife's the one, your wife's the one that texted Brian, just so you know.
She said, remind, remind Mr. Arnold that if he wants to come on.
That it's our anniversary.
That's our anniversary, that's right.
She's had a six-year-old self.
Oh, okay.
So maybe he has to bring home supper.
That's right. The last thing I want, there is a young man who watches our meetings pretty consistently, Jason Phillips, who is the grandson of Janet and Dennis Johnson, is turning eleven today, and Jason watches our meetings pretty consistently, so Jason, happy birthday. I hope that you have had a wonderful day, and happy Easter to everyone. I hope that you spend it with those that you love and that you remember the reason for our Easter celebration. Anything else, council? Then we are adjourned.